Beer board meeting called order. Roll call, please.
Councilman McGann.
Here.
Councilman McBride.
Here.
Councilman Harrell.
Here.
Councilman Stany.
Here.
Councilman Hatmaker.
Here.
Councilman Fair.
Here.
Mayor Burton.
Here. Do I hear a motion for the review and approval of minutes of the previous meeting?
Salute.
Second.
Have a motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Under new business, we have two items. First is a request from Anderson County Chamber of Commerce for a Class E on-premise special event beer permit located 245 North Main Street, Clinton, Tennessee. Is anyone here, Mr. Meredith, would you like to approach the podium? We won't look at your casual... You look like... You kind of look like me on a Friday.
I apologize.
Or a Tuesday or Wednesday.
I apologize. It's a good day to be on the water.
Amen.
I'm sure I'm showing that, so. I came in on two wheels with a bass boat. So, I'm Rick Meredith, 422 Mariner Point Drive, President of Anderson Chamber of Commerce. This permit is very similar to what we did two years ago with a long table dinner. Obviously, we've changed the theme to Margaritaville on Market, so it'd be a different thing, but it's the same setup as we did two years ago.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Meredith?
So, should the permit be located at 245 North Main? Should we amend that to...
I mean, that was... We just used that address. We did it last time for the office.
Where is 245... Is it your office?
That's the office.
Well, they're the ones asking for it. I think that's where the originally...
But it'll be on Market. Premises will be Market Street.
It'll be on Market Street.
Gotcha. Gotcha.
Okay. So, same type of setup? Hope we had good weather. It's hard to remember. It's been so long ago since we did that.
No kidding. Yeah, we're prepared for chamber weather.
Very, very fun... Very, very fun event, so. Any questions? All in favor, I'm sorry, have a motion to approve?
Salute.
Second.
Have a motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Look forward to seeing you, Jimmy Buffett, so.
Rick.
You got a pair of head hats I can borrow?
I'll get you one if you wear it.
You gotta find one big enough to fit in my head. Might be hard. Easier said than done. Number two is a request from Speedway, number 7108, for a Class B off-premise beer permit... Permit, I should say, located at 2148 North Charles G. Seabers Boulevard in Clinton. Any representatives there? Yes, ma'am. Are you the new manager?
I'm the district manager.
What? State your name and address, please.
Catherine Nemeth, and then 4462 Hillsbury Drive, Knoxville, Tennessee.
Okay. All right. So, how long have you been a manager?
I have been in this area for four years now.
Okay. So, y'all... The company as a whole follow the same policies and procedures as far as checking for ID and all that?
Absolutely.
So, what procedure do you use?
Anybody that appears to be under the age of 40, they're required to ID. In our... As kind of a blanket policy across the board, we tell our employees to just ID everybody. It kind of eliminates that second guessing when it comes to the employees, and that even includes with the regular customers. So, the expectation is that anybody that comes through our door, they're expected to be IDed.
Okay. That's state law, isn't it? To have it to check everybody's ID?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, I say this to everybody, and Councilmen, y'all can jump in too, is we're very serious about selling alcohol to minors, and first offense, even though we haven't had a first offense in a while, is you can almost guarantee, you can tell your bosses, it's gonna be $1,500.
Right.
So, just so, just make sure you train well and do well.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? Hear a motion for approval?
Salute.
Second.
Have a motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Motion to adjourn beer board meeting. Regular meeting called to order. Roll call, please.
Councilman McGann.
Here.
Councilman McBride.
Here.
Councilman Harrell.
Here.
Councilman Stany.
Here.
Councilman Hatmaker.
Here.
Mayor Burton.
Here. Let me back up a little bit, going back to a public hearing for ordinance number 658, amending Title IX, Chapter Six of the Mobile Food Vending Regulations. Anyone here would like to speak on that? Posing the public hearing, and again, we've already opened up the regular meeting called to order. Do I hear a motion for the approval of the agenda?
Salute.
Second.
Have a motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. The prayer this evening to be given by Vice Mayor Zach Fair, please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear heavenly Father, thank you for this day you've given us. It's a beautiful spring day, and be with us as we go through to conduct city business. Lead, guide, and direct us by thy wisdom and by thy will. Forgive us where we fell, thee, and may we go on forth and have a great, great week and a great month, and meet back here safely next month. All this asks in Jesus Christ's holy name. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Zach. Do you hear a motion for the review and approval of minutes of the previous meeting dated March 22nd, 2021?
Salute.
Second.
Have a motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. At this time, we'll be recognizing any visitors, citizens with any concerns or praises. Speak now, forever hold your peace. Communications for the mayor, I have a proclamation to give. So, the Fox family, if you'd like to meet me at the podium. Have a proclamation. We, as council, have a proclamation for the Fox family and all that they've done for our community. Whereas Fox Motor Company was founded in 1944 by Gene and Margaret Fox in Lake City, and relocated nine years later to Main Street in Clinton. And whereas in 1966, they accepted a Toyota franchise by erecting a sign and investing $1,000 for parts, led to them becoming Fox Toyota. And whereas, after more than 50 years of success on Main Street in Clinton, the dealership was moved in 2008 to its current location at 228 Fox Family Lane. And whereas, three generations of the Fox family have proudly served the people of East Tennessee as an award-winning dealership, treating their customers as family, and demonstrating to the community on a daily basis their Christian values. And whereas Gene and Margaret Fox, along with their daughter Patricia Fox Hoag, have gone on to their heavenly home, leaving Stanley Senior, Ronnie, and Becky, along with other family members to operate the business. And whereas, the Fox family has sold the dealership and moved on to the next journey, leaving a lasting legacy as they have earned the affection, respect, and admiration of the citizens of Clinton and surrounding areas. Now therefore, the mayor and city council of the city of Clinton wish to commend Stanley Fox Senior, Ronnie Fox, and Becky Fox Grubb for their contribution to the city of Clinton and surrounding areas, and urge all citizens to pay special tribute to these very special members of our community. This proclamation is adopted on the 26th day of April 2021. I would like for y'all to speak, if you'd like. One thing I'd like to say, I want Stanley to go first. But I do want to say that, you know, we've done several of these throughout my time, and I always say it makes the people... The people is what makes this town special and this community, and y'all are certainly following that group. And you've had a lot of opportunities to go somewhere else and invest, but never wavered your loyalty to Clinton. And I, for one, as a citizen, as a friend, I certainly appreciate that. I love you guys, and I know you're not done yet. I know you're gonna be around, and you continue to contribute and be... Have a positive impact in this community, so I want to say thank you.
Thank you, Rob.
I just want to say, it was really nice of you all to do this. It was a big honor, and it's a good thing that you do for the people of Clinton, and y'all do a great job on this commission, and we're just proud of all of you. And don't think we're going anywhere. We're gonna be around. If you need anything that we can ever help you with, please ask us, and we'll help you all we can. And I know most of the people on this commission, or council, I should say, is customers of ours, and you'll always be customers. We hope you continue to do business at Fox Toyota, because they're... The people that took over are just great people. He's met, and Zach's met Jim. He's a great guy. He's gonna do a great job. He's probably gonna do a better job than we did, because he's moved them into the 21st century with all these computers and all that. It's something, but... But continue to do business here in the city, if you would, and support them, and we do appreciate what you've done for us.
You know, I thank you all for all this, and we just kind of stirred the shit, because all of our customers, like you all, are great employees. Only thing we did is, you know, we... A real old machine. It could just really run on its own, but we thank you all, and like Ronnie said, we're not going anywhere. We're not moving out of town. We'll stay right here. So, thank you all.
I guess I'll say thank you too. We really appreciate you all. This really is an honor, and we do appreciate it, and we've been very blessed, and we're just thankful that we've been able to pass these blessings along through, you know, helping our community. So, thank you all very much.
I'll see if I can get TV proclamations for you. You might have to share or cut it in thirds, you take it home with you. Thank you all. Thank you.
One other thing I wanted to... Marlon? One other thing I wanted to show for our TV audience is, this is the... This is the new color of the new green bridge. So, this is part of a handrail that's gonna be on the outside of the bridge as you're going across. I mean, it's a pretty good size diameter on that, but it's a little bit... Maybe a little bit darker than the original. This is a resin, so it's gonna last a very long time, but I thought you all would enjoy just seeing how that's gonna look. Community reports, we don't have a city school board report today, right? Clinton Regional Planning Commission report, Councilman McGann.
The Regional Planning Commission and the Board of Zoning Appeals both met on April 12th. The Board of Zoning Appeals applicant Lynn Duncan requesting administrative review on some subdivision of record located at Loy Street, and in connection with that, requesting left side setback and right side setback. There's some question here, because these lots predate the planning commission. The lots of record date back to 1925, so they predate any guidelines that we have to administer. So, based upon that, we really have no grounds on which to do too much, other than the fact that we did grant a side setback to 12 and a half feet instead of 15 feet. There are eight lots here, and this will allow them to get maximum use out of those eight lots. So, this involved our city attorney and getting him involved to make sure where we stood, and I'm afraid we have several lots, like several sections like this in the city of Clinton we may be dealing with at some time in the future, particularly up in South Clinton. So, items two and three that you may see there involving side setbacks to 12 and a half feet deal with the same issue as Lynn Duncan. And then Michelle Hatmaker requesting front setback variance from 30 feet to 25 feet for property located at 182 Harbor Drive. Property is zoned R2. The issue here is that her property backs up to the lake, and there is a depression in her backyard that she needs to avoid, and moving her house five feet forward would help her to avoid that depression. So, she... We granted her the right to move her house five feet forward, fill the depression, and hopefully this will resolve her issue, rather than having to make some kind of other plans there. And then the Regional Planning Commission also met the same night and approved the site plan for Lynn Duncan, based upon all the guidelines that we had been granted from Mr. Crye, and the guidance that we had been given there. Then two items, I-75 Industrial Group Series III LLC requesting annexation and zone assignment of M2 for property located at Sinking Springs Road, and also the same applicant requesting rezoning from B2 to M2 for property located at 151 Frank L. Diggs Drive. These two items were withdrawn by the applicant, and since this is the second time, they will have to resubmit these. You can't postpone them but once, and after that, they have to resubmit. And then applicant Will Robinson and Larry Harmon requesting site plan review for property located at Common Point Lane. Property is zoned B4. This is behind Bojangles, up toward the interstate. It is a takeout-only pizza structure. No sit-in at all. It's all takeout, and they will be using the existing drive there from Bojangles to get in and out, but there will be no onsite eating there. It's strictly order and pickup. And there's some issues with landscaping and storm drainage, but as soon as these were met, we passed it subject to those being met to Mr. Barrett's satisfaction. And then applicant Ken White requesting site plan review for property located at Liner Street. The property is zoned R3, and this was also asked to be postponed. This is the first time, so it can be resubmitted next month. Also, as we'll deal with later in the meeting, council recommended to city council the passage of a P1 amendment dealing with our parks. And as I say, we'll be dealing with that later in the meeting. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. McGann?
Larry, the... Where the Bojangles, where the road is going toward a pizza place, I guess. Because when Tommy built that, there was some controversy going on between city and county, who's gonna take that up. What was the verdict there?
Our former director of Public Works, Mr. Duncan... Excuse me. Mr. Murphy made sure that that met our specifications. We would not accept it until he was happy about the way that it was built and the drainage and everything else, so it is up to... It's up to city specifications. Thanks. Thanks to Mr. Murphy.
Good.
It's actually a city street now.
Yeah.
Yes.
But not until he approved it.
Any other questions? Larry, this applicant there at Sinking Springs Road, what was his... What's playing was, you know?
We don't know. It's been submitted twice. No one's ever shown up, and the first time it was postponed, and then this time, nobody showed up. We have no knowledge exactly what they want to do, other than that they want to change it to M2.
You know? Is it... They want to be annexed?
Yes.
Is it... Y'all get that far to see if it's touching points or anything?
It's never even been broached and meeting yet.
Okay.
I can tell you, being an ex-fisher on the chamber, the chamber knows about the same amount we do. They're asking me what's going on, and I say, "I don't know. You tell me what's going on."
Mayor, that's the donut that didn't get annexed.
Yeah.
Behind Buddy's Barbecue.
Oh.
So, they're... And why, I don't know, but they're asking just to annex part of it this time.
Not the full donut, just half the donut?
Half the donut.
It's a bagel.
I've got so many comments I can make on that, and I won't. We're not a half a donut type of council. We're a whole donut. There, I said it. The... I'm glad everything worked out with Lynn Duncan. He's a very good builder, and it's gonna add a lot of... It's gonna spruce up Loy Street and that whole area a lot, and it's gonna add a lot of value to a lot of people's homes, too.
Eight houses, I believe.
Yeah. Be nice. Charlie'd be happy.
Doubt it. Doubt it.
And one other question I had, I'm sorry, I'm full of questions. The P1 designation, did y'all create this motion for approval based on what we sent back? Or was this created, or is this a process thing?
This... I think this... There were some amendments there. We're in a very unique situation. You have a private entity in a park that is administered by a city, specifically Aspire Park, which is privately owned, but yet we have administrative control over it. The only thing in our area that we can think of that even comes close to it is Biltmore, and that's certainly not Biltmore. But there were some concerns, particularly as you read it here in a minute, about not only Aspire, but anything that may come about in the future. We want to maintain the scenic structure of our area, the natural beauty of our area. As you read it there, one of the questions I'm thinking about, what if they want to knock off half the side of the hill? That's gonna destroy part of the... And at least, we need to be able to discuss this, perhaps control it, maybe say, "No, let's not do that," because that's gonna destroy the overall look of it. Everything has been great. In fact, Aspire was consulted on this. They have absolutely no problem with it. It's just a matter of, we're trying to foresee any future problems in maintaining, let's call it, the natural beauty of our area.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other questions for Larry?
No.
Thanks, Larry. Clinton Regional... Where'd you do that? Clinton Utilities Board report, Councilman Fair.
In the packet this month, I asked general manager to send over this PowerPoint, and I just wanted to point out, just real quick, highlight the debt levels. This particular PowerPoint, for those at home that don't see it, it talks about CUBs, the way that they manage their debt, and I'll just give out some of the numbers. This pertains to principles. Oak Ridge, around $70 million in debt. LUB, 78. KUB, a million. And CUB is 6.6 right there under. So, that was very impressive, as a board member to see the numbers, and what that... That has a direct effect on our ratepayers, and if you see that next slide there, of what a ratepayers responsibility for the principal, and it's quite significant. And if you can go a couple down, you can see that when it comes to the water, there's... There is no debt. So, very proud of the job that leadership and the folks over at CUB have done in managing debt. I know this council feels how they feel about fiscal responsibility and debt, and so it's nice to see one of our stakeholders and one of our shareholders in the community, and one of our partners feels the same way. So, I think it's a healthy fiscal situation for both the city and the utility. And that's all I had, unless you guys have any questions. If anybody has any questions, I'll take them at this time.
Any questions for Zach?
Zach, I've got one. I've got an email about the KUB article in the paper going to get into broadband business. I don't know anything about it, other than I guess it's competition to Comcast, and maybe a lot of people like to see that. Can you share any thoughts? I don't know if it's a good idea or bad, but what's your thoughts on that?
So, I'll get you more information, for sure, provided to all the council members about broadband. When I was going through the required training, and we had that over at the University of Tennessee, I don't know if it was MCAT or CCAT, who put that on, but as utility board member, you have to have certain amount of training, and there was a consensus among some of the board members there that broadband is quite a headache for certain utilities, and it's been a expensive headache, and it's caused some of these utilities to take on excessive amounts of debt. That led me to believe, just broad brush, 30,000 feet up, that it's a cost-benefit analysis for a very few people that don't have access. So, where you see broadband being used is oftentimes in remote parts of East Tennessee or Tennessee. Think somewhere like, you know, New River, Bryceville, where Comcast perhaps doesn't reach. I'm making an assumption there. Whereas here in the city of Clinton, the... Everybody has an option to get broadband, and it is a limited one. It's either, you know, Comcast, or you can get AT&amp;T or DirecTV, perhaps. But, you know, the utility, my opinion is CUB's not in the business of laying cable or fiber optics. That will be obsolete within perhaps five years or even sooner. They're talking about now satellites. You know, Elon Musk has got some initiatives to start doing competition, and so, say all that, it's a cost-benefit analysis as a board member, but I want to get further drilled-down information, so I can get pushed out to you guys, so then you can talk to your folks that have that. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions?
If I'm not mistaken, Councilman McBride has brought this up. I think Marstown, Hamblin County has it, and they've had all kinds of headaches, and he can probably give us some insight into this, too.
They do. That's one of the utilities that I'm aware of, and you're correct.
You almost think, you know, more rural utilities that where broadband and cable like that's just not... It needs some support that these utilities are given, but I think when you live in a larger area, that there's already somebody in that lane, so to speak.
Yes, and there's some other contractual agreements that the utility, CUB, has reached with Comcast that flow to the benefit of the utility, which directly flows to the benefit of the ratepayers. And so, the... Early on, years and years and years ago, CUB was able to aggressively negotiate some of these deals on the front end, and they just, over time, have accrued to the benefit of the utility at the expense of Comcast, and we wouldn't want to be in breach of that. There's more information I will get and gather and push to you guys, because I think it's an important thing. I've been asked that before, and I want all of our folks out there to understand what we're doing and why we do it.
There's an article recently about KUB, so we may have more questions about it.
Yeah. Going back to your graph, you know, that really is an impressive graph, where, I don't know, rooftop-wise, Knoxville may be bigger than CUB. Knoxville KUB may be bigger than Clinton CUB, but it should be about the same as Little North City and Oak Ridge. And you're looking at Oak Ridge having over $70 million in debt with their utility, and we're right at close to, you know, six and a half, seven million dollars. That is impressive. I didn't want to overlook that, but hats off to you guys. Before we go any further, can you... I had someone call in. I don't know your name back there.
I just told him.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Josh. I mean, thanks, Josh. I see you sent me the text. Thanks, Zach. Other board and community reports? Larry, you have anything?
Might share with you, our director, Green McAdoo, is doing a fantastic job. He's already got a lot of plans in place. For those people that have enjoyed Jazz on the Hill, it is gonna be back. I think right now, I didn't bring those notes with me, I think the second Saturday in the month, they're planning to have Jazz on the Hill all summer. He's planning to have cleanup days, I believe, first Saturday in the month, to try to pick up garbage and stuff along the sides of the road. And he's also planning some training clinics to try to help people with various things. I think he's got one that he's listing now about how to determine what is actual real news and what's fake news, how you can find out which, you know, what's true and what's not. So, Adams is trying to expand the reach list, let's say, of Green McAdoo, trying to involve people and try to make it really one of the center hubs for our community. He is, as Roger, I think, explained when we hired him, he is a ball of fire. He's on top of everything.
Great. Did you maybe make mention of the food trucks?
Yeah, I think he's gonna use food trucks...
During that same time, the Jazz on the Hill?
Yeah, I believe so. He had a whole raft of things. I had a whole sheet of notes.
And he was gonna be here tonight, but his father had a stroke Saturday, so he'll go home to Chicago for the week. But we'll get him... Try to get him here next meeting.
Okay.
It was really good.
Thanks again, Larry. Thanks again, Larry. General government report, Mr. Trout.
Mayor, in February, council approved an agreement with the Anderson County Board of Education to lease the city football field and baseball field for Clinton High School Athletics. The agreement was modified by the Anderson County Law Director and approved by Anderson County Commission as modified, which effectively placed the Anderson County Board of Education in breach of the approved agreement. We have since modified the agreement to all agreeable parties relative to the liability requirements. We would therefore request authorization to execute the revised lease agreement. So moved.
Your motion to approve?
Yes.
Motion in second, any further discussion?
What was the main change, or the main thing they changed that were approved?
Publicitas Partners, which is our insurer, requires any third party user to put the city down as an additional insurer. Due to state law that was explained to me, the county government can't do that to the city, so they couldn't put us an additional insurer, but for our viability, we went back and really strengthened the paragraph, pretty much the Board of Education is liable for anything and everything that happens there. And we had them also increase their amount from 1 million to 2 million.
Okay.
Who will be the point of contact, you think, for the football field and baseball field? Brad Collet, do you think?
Probably, yes.
Construction starts right after graduation?
Yes, Monday, Monday after graduation by now.
Good.
Yes.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Mayor, the 2021-2022 balanced budget will be posted probably sometime by Friday on Dropbox for you. Finance, I'll defer to Gail.
You've got your sales tax report, we had another good month with sales tax. As a matter of fact, if you look at state sales tax, which cities kind of follow suit with that, we've already met pretty much our budget for state sales tax right now. The city was up a little over 14% year-to-date, we're up almost 11% right now. Countywide this month was up a little over 33%, so we're still trending very much in a positive direction on sales tax. Our finances this month, if you'll notice our bottom line, we have an excess of a little over a million dollars right now. That will slowly taper off as we have collected the majority of our property tax right now, so for the next few months of the year, we live on those property taxes that we brought in, and of course, we continue to get our state share taxes. Part of that's due to, we've, you know, delayed a lot of capital projects this year because of COVID. We do have some of those coming up at the end of the year, so you'll see that dwindle down some, but based on our conservative budgeting, and the departments has stayed within that from their spending, of course, we dropped a lot of our revenue projections at the beginning of this budget year, and a lot of those have come through better than what we expected, so looks really good from the finance standpoint.
Great. Any questions for Gail?
Gail, we talked about CUB's debt, can you go over the city's kind of overview of, you know, how we're doing on that, or we?
I don't have those numbers in front of me right now, but we're projected, I believe it's 2026, I believe, the city will be debt-free. The debt you all issued, you know, we issued the debt from the school system, but we put that in line with the rest of our other payoff, so we're not, don't see any need to incur any anytime soon, so we should be on target to pay off in 2026. We could possibly pull some money out and pay off early, but the way ours is structured, we would pay a premium to pay it off, which is not good, as well as, unlike some of your personal debt, we don't have the option to just pay off portions. It's either all or none, and so, some of ours right now just wouldn't fall into place to pay off early, so, but by 2026, you'll be debt-free.
How much would that free you on like an annual basis, our debt service? Is that like about a million dollars, or?
Well, this budget year, you've got budgeted 1.3 million in debt service. Now, part of that, the school system pays us back. They pay about, I'm trying to think what that is, probably 3, 4,000, $100,000 or so that they pay back, so probably about a million dollars.
That'll be an interesting budget year.
Be a good budget.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thanks, Gail.
So I have.
Any questions for Roger on the project list, the activities?
Any projection opening date for the splash pad? A lot of people are asking about that.
The current one, probably depending on the weather, sometime probably mid-May, we'll probably usually do it on a Monday weekend, but possibly earlier this year if weather stays warm.
And fireworks are going on, planning that?
Yes, we've got it planned for July the 3rd, Saturday, July the 3rd, with all the activities. Probably pretty much back to normal in most things, we'll probably try to spread things out a little better, so it won't be large crowds in one area.
Good. Excellent. So, why are we doing it July 30th again?
We always, when it fell on the 4th, moved it to the 3rd.
So does the 4th.
Yeah.
God doesn't like fireworks?
God doesn't see creative.
Well, he created them. I just kind of scratched my head on that one. It's like having, never mind, I'll be quiet.
Roger, on council, over the years, you do get concerns about speeding in neighborhoods, and there was one recently. Can you kind of explain, you know, typically it's, you know, the River Bend area, Eagle Bend, Mariners Point, some of the things we're doing there to combat that?
We have hair traffic engineers with Cannon and Cannon, and asked them to look at three areas. One, they did a preliminary on the North Charles Seaford Boulevard at the X122, which is a pretty extensive set of plans they've got. It's preliminary, but we've also asked them to look at Eagle Bend, Riverside, and River Bend. They've came back with a few things, just ideas, kind of to get our thoughts on what we might like. We've asked them to proceed on with a couple of them, give us some areas, recommendations, maybe where to put them. Traffic islands, kind of like we put out here at the middle school, the small.
Roundabout.
The roundabout, it's not a true roundabout, but it's a smaller version of possible places. They've got some tables, traffic tables that protrude out from the sidewalk, so there's three or four different designs, plus, you know, the biggest thing, this is one thing we're doing on Market and Main, is actually narrowing the lanes now. This is a big traffic combination. Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Thanks, Roger. Under ordinances and resolutions, first reading of new ordinances, ordinance number 659, this is amending the city of Clinton travel policy. Hear a motion for approval?
To move.
Second.
Motion in second, any further discussion? Roger, would you like to give us a clip notes on that?
It's pretty much just updating it and bringing it in line with IRS rates for travel per diem and mileage.
Okay. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gann.
Yes.
Councilman Brown. Councilman Harrell.
Yes.
Councilman Stein.
Yes.
Councilman Nightmiker.
Yes.
Mayor Burke.
Yes, ordinance number 659 passes on first of two readings. Ordinance number 660, amending CMC Title 14, Section 14-613, which is the P1/mixed-use park district. Hear a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second. Have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Roger, you want to speak on that?
And what I was just looking over, the ordinance, pretty much as Councilman Gann said, it just puts in some of our best environmental practices to be used, just to ensure that, as Councilman said, that the area remains pretty much the terrain it is surrounding area.
Okay. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gann.
Yes.
Councilman McBride. Councilman Harrell.
Yes.
Councilman Stein.
Yes.
Councilman Nightmiker.
Yes.
Councilman Fair.
Yes.
Mayor Burke.
Yes, ordinance number 660 passes on first of two readings. Under second and final reading, ordinance number 658, this is amending Title IX, Chapter VI of the mobile food vending regulations. Hear a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second. Have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Roger, do you want to speak on that?
As I told you last month, it pretty much simplifies the process, makes it much easier for someone to come in and get one, it changes it to a $25 annual permit, still has some restrictions on public land, or on how you can do it, but then it relieves a lot of the restrictions on private property.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor, when, Mr. Trout, when one comes in, what's, is there an inspection of that trailer itself? First time you, first time they've got a permit, first time you've seen this vendor, let's say, what's the inspection phase?
Gina inspects them. They have to have their health department inspection and that stuff, so they have to provide us with that. They have to provide us with their business license, usually if it's somebody out Knoxville, they have one there, but they can provide us that one.
Right.
So, there is some procedures.
So, the inside working of the trailer itself, is this a household, no, or?
Really not.
It's usually the health department, isn't it?
Yeah, most health department.
Okay. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gann.
Yes.
Councilman McBride. Councilman Harrell.
Yes.
Councilman Stein.
Yes.
Councilman Nightmiker.
Yes.
Councilman Fair.
Yes. Yes, ordinance number 658 passes on second and final reading. Under adoption of resolutions, resolution number 810, this is a personnel policy update and revision. Hear a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second. Have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Would you like to comment on that?
It really just brings updates from state and federal laws that have changed, but it also gives the city manager the lead way, that usually a lot of the personnel stuff is fluid, and we're all the time getting changes, so it gives the city managers the lead way to make those changes in between odd number of years, which we'll bring it back to council every odd number for approval, but it kind of gives that lead way.
Okay. All right, any further discussion, questions? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gann.
Yes.
Councilman McBride. Councilman Harrell.
Yes.
Councilman Stein.
Yes.
Councilman Nightmiker.
Yes.
Councilman Fair.
Yes.
Mayor Burke.
Yes, resolution number 810 passes on first reading. Any old business before us?
Yes, Mayor, I got something. Mr. Gann, is it true, being old business, is it true you've got a Reggie bar in your freezer that's 40 years old? Serious, I need, I was told that.
Is that true?
That is true. I have six of them.
Are they worth anything?
I'm not putting them up for sale yet, so.
Whatever the buyer wants to pay. That's funny. That's funny stuff. Any other old business? Any new business? I have a couple items here, of course. Under new business, the review and approval of certificate of good moral character for retail liquor license application. Sureish Patel and Alice Patel at 2170 North Charles Seaford Boulevard, is that, would you like to approach the podium, please, sir?
Yes, Lisa Patel, address is 4920 Creek Rock Lane, Knoxville, Tennessee. Just trying to open up a liquor shop near North Charles Boulevard.
Where's the location?
2170.
Where is that?
Right near the interstate. It's next to Buddy's Barbecue.
Okay, okay. Have you already, what's the process of there? Have you already gotten an application?
Yes, I have applied for a.
Then this is the next step, as far as good moral character?
For the city.
When are they supposed to finish the building that you would be in?
Well, they should be starting soon, I'd say next month or so.
Okay.
They should be up in, say, a couple months, three, four months.
Okay.
Not exactly sure the date line on those yet, but sooner the better.
How many stores do you have right now?
I don't have any.
You speak first one.
I've been manager.
You have any other store, what's your, any other businesses?
I do have like a convenience store in Knoxville, so I'm kind of used to that, and has run a liquor store as a manager in Knoxville, too, so kind of have that experience.
Any other question, any questions for the council? Do we make a motion on this, or just?
Yeah.
Okay.
So moved.
We got to make a motion first, man.
Review and approval of certificate of good moral character for the liquor license, I'm making that motion.
Have a motion in a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Would you like to hang around for a second, if you cannot, I'd like to talk to you. Any other new business?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'd like to, and I'm not sure, I'll make a motion, I don't know if a motion is necessary, but I want to make one to direct and authorize the city manager to review with the city mayor, to review with the city manager, the current contract, that the city manager can come back next month with any recommendations that we see fit. That's my motion.
Have a motion in a second, any further discussion?
Just, I think it's important that as we plan for the future, what's going to happen here in the city over the next few years, I think that Roger's leadership has been exemplary. I couldn't have asked for a better partner for a city council to work with, and in light of that, I want to make sure that we can handcuff him a little bit and make sure that he doesn't ride off into the sunset prematurely, because, you know, I think there's a lot of great things that are happening for the city, and I think that city mayor, it'd be appropriate to take a look at that and come back with any recommendations they see fit.
Very good, I agree. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
One other thing, Mayor, real quick. The TML Town and City newspaper will be coming out later this week, good story, everyone should look at, it's about the city of Greenville, historic Depot Street, makeover, first phase of Greenville downtown redevelopment plan. It's their phase of our TAP grant, almost identical to what we're proposing or want to be doing in downtown Clinton on Market and Main. They've got some really good pictures, you'd almost think you were looking at Clinton looking at it.
You may want to provide a copy for some of the ladies here, they might be interested in looking at that, too, so, thank you. Anything else? Roger, one thing I was thinking about during the meeting, we talked earlier, I think as a council, we talked about this, having some type of employings, just so we can have a